Item is number 27B on page seven, appointment of Daniel Holbrook to the Downtown Development Authority Board.
Fantastic. All right, is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public. Mr. Holbrook, having sat through this entire meeting, I think, is he here? Yeah? No? Okay, good, all right, I wasn't sure. This being an appointment, as a mayor appointment, I cannot vote on, do I hear a motion?
Move to point.
Second.
Second.
All right, move to a point, and it's been seconded, all those in favor of the point? Mr. Dr.?
I just have one question, I just want to make sure that, because I don't know Mr. Holbrook, so I don't know if he's a resident, or a landowner, or less see down there, but I just want to make sure we're still in balance on the numbers of people on the DDA Board that are either landowners.
Correct, yeah, thank you, and Mr. West, you might be a little too, I'm sorry, that escapes me right now. I remember looking at it and believing that he's still met within the owner and at large.
Council members, Chuck West, I'm a real estate broker, I'm very familiar with Mr. Holbrook's qualifications. He's a commercial appraiser related to Chris Brown, whom many of you know, he's on temporary assignment in Europe right now, so Dan is the premier commercial appraiser in town, and highly qualified Madam Mayor to answer Dr. Riney's question. He doesn't own property downtown, but I believe his position is to take Dave Odie's position, who's the current Chair of the DDA, and Dave Odie doesn't have property downtown, neither does Dan Holbrook. He's a Cheyenne resident, and he owns real estate, but not in the downtown district.
Thank you, Mr. West, for refreshing my memory of that, yes, he is in fact taking Mr. Odie's place, Mr. Odie is a landscape architect, and not a property owner, so this position is a non-property owner, and it still maintains the balance of property owners versus non-property owners within the DDA.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And now I've remembered that, of course, he was in Europe, which is why he wasn't here, so thank you very much, it's getting late in the day. Any other questions from council? Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries with my abstention.
Reappointments of Scott Colley and Deema Jo Gilbert to the Cheyenne Laramie County Economic Development Joint Powers Board, and Allison Anderson, Richard Berry, and Ron Jeffrey to the Laramie County Juvenile Services Joint Powers Board.
Thank you, are there any comments from the public on these appointments? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. White, discussion from council on these appointments? Questions? Questions? All right, hearing none again, I'm not able to vote on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes with my abstention.
Announcement of a public hearing to be held Monday, July 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, for a restaurant liquor license application filed with the City Clerk's Office for The Ridge Restaurant Limited Liability Company, doing business as The Ridge Restaurant, 1820 Ridge Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held Monday, July 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, to receive public comments on a proposed trade of a portion of real property owned by the city of Cheyenne at 2303 Westland Road, for a portion of real property owned by Roger E. Gill and Alec Yergelovich, I think, at 2305 Westland Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held Monday, July 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, to receive public comment and input on the development plan for the Hines/ Whole H2 project as proposed by the Cheyenne Downtown Development Authority. Other business?
Thank you, is there other business from the public before the council tonight? Mr. Dirksen.
Jeff Dirksen, Pinto Lane. Mayor, or council members. I apologize, to start with, for, I'm not very adept at picking short meetings to come to, so I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. I do have more than one item to bring up today. First item has to do with a meeting that was held by the Laramie County Commissioners last Tuesday, and one of the items on their agenda was discussion about the situation with the Laramie County residents who live on Summit Drive. They have been experiencing flooding of their properties of a frequency in the last year and a half that they've not experienced in more than 30 or 40 years. And they are at a loss as to what can be done about it. The indications seem to point to the source being the Thomas Heights subdivision. At the meeting, Mayor, you reached over to Laramie County to come up with a way for the city and the county to work together to avoid problems like this in the future, so that development in the city doesn't create problems for people downstream when it comes to stormwater runoff. Nevertheless, the people on Summit Drive have a problem now, and they're looking for somebody to do something now. And so my question to the city is, what direction are we, the city of Cheyenne, taking this? And what's that first step that we're going to take? And also, how do we, as citizens, fellow citizens of Laramie County, stay apprised of what the city is doing on this effort?
Thank you, Mr. Dirksen, for the sake of council, as far as that committee meeting, the county commissioners meeting, I did attend, knowing that there were going to be residents that we certainly have heard from, that are concerned about flooding within the area, county residents. Regarding the Thomas Heights addition, we have certainly spoken about it within our engineering department. Unfortunately, it's one of those issues, when you have, you know, staff turnover, I'd spoken about it with Mr. Voller, we had worked actually with Mr. Geringer with the county to develop a conversation, to start a city-county stormwater drainage plan. There used to be Laramie County planning, and as it was told by some, there was a divorce, and obviously, some fell out of the decree, if it will be. So we, in my talks before Mr. Voller left, that we probably should enter into conversation with the engineering department at the county, and sadly enough, during the meeting, it was expressed by one commissioner that perhaps the remedy of relief for those residents would be to sue the city, in which, once one member of another body tends to throw out a lawsuit for another, I kind of backtracked a little bit, as far as, you know, extending a full olive branch, if you will, but nonetheless, I think that we owe it to certainly those residents to take a look at what we can do to fix things. I believe that there are probably solutions out there, but as we have learned, there are solutions, but they obviously come with dollars. And so our next step, I did speak with our city engineer, Amy Allen, and let them know and we are working right now to find a time to meet up with the engineering department from the county, and take a look at things, and start those discussions. I will say that now's probably a good time, because when our city engineer came on board, obviously, we were breaking ground across the street with that project, we had Christiansen underway, and just getting her feet wet, so now that she knows where the pencils and pens are in the dusk, and things are underway, with Civic Center Commons and everything, I think that we can now have time for these discussions, so certainly, we will be meeting with county officials on that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and I forgot to mention, I applaud you for reaching out to the county to come up with a process, so we can avoid situations like this in the future. But my other question is, how do we keep apprised of the progress you're making on this effort? How do we get information on it?
Mr. Dirksen, I believe that that's something that we can certainly, you know, report back once this committee is formed, and certainly let everybody know what the process is going forward. But I think the first step is just to get the engineers at the table, and let them start talking about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number two. I think it was a couple of meetings ago, I asked a question about whether the city of Cheyenne's water distribution system still used lead pipe in some areas. I tried to confirm, Mr. Hayes gave an answer to that, I tried to confirm that with the meeting minutes, which weren't very specific, and there was no, the video wasn't available or accessible. I believe the answer was, yes, there is still lead pipe in the distribution system that BOPU is responsible for. My question, follow-on question to that is, what is their plan? What is the schedule that they're working towards to replace that lead pipe? Do we know where it is? And if we do know where it is, have we notified the people and the businesses that are downstream of that lead pipe? That they are downstream, and has their water been tested, and is it tested on a regular basis to determine whether or not there is lead in the water that's going to their locations? Ignorance may be bliss, but ignorance is not necessarily healthy.
Correct, Mr. Dirksen, while I am certainly not one to, I tell my staff, make the call for other people, don't have them call other people, this is one of those, unfortunately, where we are not the BOPU, and I don't have those answers for you, and I'm not going to pretend to have those answers for you. It's very similar to when people call me and want their children to graduate from high school with all the right grades and classes, and I tell them I'm not in charge of education. So while it matters to me, unfortunately, I can't answer for them, and I don't believe anybody here can answer for the BOPU as far as their strategic plan for those lead pipes.
Madam Mayor, I can, I'm in the water industry, and I don't work for BOPU, but I do know that what keeps the lead from leaching into the water is a pH adjustment in the water, so if the pH stays above a certain area, the drinking water standard is six and a half to nine pH, if your pH is up around eight, it coats the pipe with the material to help prevent the leaching of lead, and under EPA regulations, that they have to have lead and copper testing done at certain locations every year, and so those neighborhoods are definitely addressed by the EPA. Exactly what BOPU does, I don't know, but I know that that's under the regulations.
Mr., obviously, that is correct, we are, we, the city and the Board of Public Utilities, obviously have to abide by very high stringent EPA regulations with ongoing testing, very frequent testing, and I just read their latest report, and we were above grade for everything. So I'm happy to send you those reports, and happy to get back with you as far as their schedule for those pipes.
Okay, well, I think that, I mean, if it's not publicly available somewhere else, I think that's something we should find out, and I think the people that are downstream ought to find out that they are downstream of lead pipe in the water distribution system. And while I know, because BOPU sends out their water quality reports, I don't know where they're doing their testing, but specifically, in this case, we ought to be testing downstream of wherever that lead pipe is. And I realize, I didn't expect an answer this evening, I just wanted to raise a question, but also find out, how do we get the answers, or how do those answers become available to the public?
Mr. Dirksen, I will get with Mr. Brooks at BOPU, and we will get that information sent to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Last item. My wife and I ride bicycles and run on city streets in Cheyenne and the Greenway, and consequently, we get a different perspective of the area, because we're a little closer to the side of the road, we're not going as fast, not as fast as I was 10 years ago either, but nevertheless, we get a different perspective of, or view of the city. And one of the things that has appalled us is the amount of trash that we see on the sides of a road in Cheyenne, and makes us wonder, you know, what can be done to deal with that? I see a couple of different sources of that, excuse me. One source, the obvious, is just people pitching it out the windows of their vehicle. The other is the way we collect, or actually dump trash in recycling into the trucks on resident streets. And, you know, with the amount of wind we have around here, it's easy for some of those things, paper, plastic bottles, to get picked up and never make it into the truck, and then just end up blowing somewhere into Nebraska, but in this case, some of it doesn't make it out of the city. So my question is, you know, in terms of what can we do with it? Have we ever had a kind of a campaign, public education kind of effort, like a Keep Cheyenne Beautiful effort, to try to encourage people to not pitch their stuff out the windows? But also, like I mentioned with the dumping recyclables and trash into the truck, there are probably ways that maybe all of us should be packaging that stuff, so it doesn't blow away, and if there is, I don't know about it, and I would like to find out if there are recommendations from our solid waste people on what we can do to keep that stuff, you know, into the truck and not blowing around the city. But especially, you know, public education or public campaign about, you know, keeping Cheyenne beautiful, radio, TV, the newspaper, try to get people's awareness, because we do have a nice city, and we'd like to keep it that way.
Madam Mayor, do you mind, I have one address, because I've been working with Richard, our new Greenway coordinator, what ended up happening is, he had his email list that he sent out to the adopt a Greenway people that he had on file, and he got several mailer daemons back for people that were no longer in Cheyenne, or no longer using that email address. And so, one of the things I've been talking with him about is, he has several red zones along the Greenway, and so what we want to do is to try to actually get into those red zones, find people that actually are using the Greenway in those red zones, and see amongst their neighborhoods if they're willing to step up and create their own adopt a Greenway segments for areas that they already walk. That's one of them, like your PSA that you were talking about, to Keep Cheyenne Beautiful. As far as the sanitation and other complaints, I would leave that to the mayor to follow up with the department head.
Right, Mr. Dirksen, in regards to the sanitation, that certainly is an issue, and I'll tell you that I've spoken actually to several other mayors that live in and have windy communities as well. And I think one of the things that we can possibly do better is to encourage people to essentially, if possible, not set their trash out the night before, but get up early in the morning, because what happens is, people set their trash out the night before, and when do we have our biggest gust? Usually, I'm waking up at 3:00 in the morning, so if you could wait possibly until 7:00 in the morning, especially for the recyclables, which tend to be lighter weight for those containers, and tend to tip over. I know, I personally, I don't put my container out every single time that there's a pickup, because my container is not full, and it's more able to tip over, because it's light. So I think some kind of campaign, I believe that we could do better about that, just as far as, you know, putting the word out, is, if it's not full, just wait until it is, and also, don't put it on a windy night. Vicki, do you have, Ms. Nemeczek, do you have other things to add? We're not alone in this, we're not the only windy city, and we are trying to combat this, it is difficult.
Vicki Nemeczek, Public Works, through you, Mayor. We do have, by ordinance, you are required to control your trash until it is deposited into our truck. That means you should bag it, not everyone does. If you have a neighbor who does that, doesn't bag their trash, and you find that there's trash laying around, you should notify the sanitation department, we will send a letter, and we will address those problems. We also can provide sweeping, if there's an area that you find that there's trash. We can send our sweepers out by work order to any area of the city. The recycle, we do allow bagging when it's windy, so residents may bag their recycles when it's windy, and I also encourage people, if it's windy, if you expect that it may be dumped over, you're better off just not having it collected, and we do allow, just don't put it out that week if it's really windy. And we do allow free drop-offs at the transfer station when we have windy periods, and people want to get rid of their recycle, so we do allow that. I do go on TV once every month, the first Tuesday every month, and talk about different things. I've talked about recycle, I've talked about this particular problem in the past, and I will again. And we do our best to keep the areas clean, we'll send out our sanitation folks if somebody calls us and lets us know that there's an area of concern.
And it's 6:30, is by ordinance, right? You have to have your trash receptacle out by 6:30 AM, correct?
Vicki Nemeczek, through you, Mayor, that is correct, 6:30 AM.
Thank you, and that, that's kind of part of the public education process, because I wasn't aware that it's okay to bag your recyclables, because that's part of, I think, part of the problem there too, but if I didn't know about it, I'm sure there are other people that don't know about it too. So, I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dirksen.
Madam Mayor, council, my name is Mark Court, how are you all doing this evening?
Wow.
I'm here to discuss the issue of RVs parked on our streets. I am a firm believer in personal rights, I truly believe, I'm a veteran of the US military, I spent six years, and so I'm a firm believer of protecting our civil rights. However, the one problem with civil rights, personal rights, is that one person's rights violates another person's rights. With that, with rights like that, responsibility making, let's see, let me get back to it. With rights come responsibility to making responsible decisions, whether they're popular or unpopular. A really, really, really good example of an unpopular decision made by city council that had great benefits for our city, was the smoking ban. It was a very controversial issue for years to come, people complained about it, but our city is better off by having a smoking ban. So many of our citizens in this community, the minority of the population, owns recreational vehicles, horse trailers, boats, things like that, and they impede public safety. By no means should public safety ever be trumped by personal rights, ever. As a decision maker, as citizens of our community, it is our obligation to assure that everybody in the city, everybody comes to visit our city, is safe, has a safe way of getting around. If we fail to do, if we fail to make a proper decision to protect public safety, we fail as a community. Take this for example, some of our streets, Mayor, you live in the avenues, as I do, and I'm getting ready to leave the avenues and move up north of Del Range, the streets are very narrow. With that being said, if I have, and the way the ordinance, what I, was I, the impression that I'm under, is that if I own an RV, I can park it in front of my house. The problem with that is, if my neighbor has an RV parked in front of his house, and I have to back out of my driveway, I cannot see around there a pedestrian, let's see here, automobile drivers, motorcyclists, bicyclists, pedestrians cannot see around that RV. It becomes a major public safety issue. So let's put this into consideration, emergency vehicle, your loved one is having a heart attack or stroke, or your house is on fire, those emergency vehicles cannot get to that location, because RVs are blocking the path. Councilmember Labor, I sent you a photograph the other day over at the corner of Sixth and Evans, of an RV that was sticking out, it wasn't parallel to the curb, it was sticking out, and if I go down Evans and made that turn to go north onto Evans, and a car was coming to turn on Sixth Avenue, we could not see each other, three times in a week. I've almost gotten an accident at that intersection as a result of that RV sitting there. So, I'm going to hear arguments, and you're going to hear arguments that it's my individual right to have an RV. You're going to hear the argument that I can't afford a parking space, I cannot afford, and my take is, if you can afford that recreation vehicle, that horse trailer, that boat, you surely can afford a place to park your vehicle. With that being said, we are also losing revenue in our city, because you're depriving a business owner from thriving in a business of an RV storage facility, where he can generate revenue, would generate tax revenue for our community as a result of it. I truly understand everybody's concerns with this issue, but under no reason at all should personal rights ever violate public safety. Any questions?
Thank you so much for staying through this entire night, I saw you at Super Day, you said you were going to be here, and you lasted the whole night.
I told you I was going to be here for this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion by the public? Mr. Cole? You're the next contestant, I don't have any prizes for you, I'm sorry.
Frank Cole. I'm going to back up to the last gentleman. A lot of areas in Cheyenne, covenants prohibit the parking of RVs in front of the house or in the driveway. Up in the bluffs, I have that, and I fight them all the time. The people get their letters, get that thing off of here, and it works pretty good. I've only had one person really took opposition to it. But other places, years ago, I think it was Aurora, Colorado, passed ordinance to get them off the streets, and they passed it with a lot of opposition, but within five years, which they gave people five years, the streets were clearing of the vehicles. And talking about, in Park, I think I was on 23rd Street, and all about south of Dairy Queen, that street that goes south there, whatever it is, there used to be a pickup with a camper on the back, parked right at the stop sign. You could not see the stop sign at all. Until you got to the corner, driven 20 miles an hour, oh, here's a stop sign, how do you stop? In five feet, you don't. And they need to watch any vehicle that is blocking stop signs, every place in the city. But I think, Cheyenne has tried twice to run them off the streets in the front yards. It needs to be done, and areas that they are done, people will go in and build the storage units. Just go down to Wellington, look, the big storage area, it's just been built right by I-25 north of Wellington. They got it done, it's over half full already. So that's one thing I'd like you to try to do. Yes, the RV people, they want them parked in their front yard, that's not the place for them. So I would love to see you work on something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Any other discussion by the public? Any other discussion by the public? All right, council. All yours. Pardon?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White?
Just wanted to say a congratulations and great job to the department heads and staff and volunteers that put on another great Super Day. It was, it was a great, just a wonderful event, packed, and more boost this year than I can ever remember, so it was a great job, great job to community, recreation, and events.
Thank you. Any other discussion or business by council?
First of all, I'd like to compliment Dr. Riney on his Robert's Rule of Order uncalled a question. I'm still learning up here, and I was like, when I heard Jeff say that, and then you critique it, I was like, huh, still got that, okay. Second party is what was reported in the newspaper, and I've had more chance to think on it, on a nondiscrimination ordinance. Basically, after reading Justice Kennedy's ruling on this, when I made my statement that some kind of religious provision was going to have to be included in a nondiscrimination ordinance, I meant it. That was what I had gathered from Justice Kennedy's, you know, his opinion in regards to this, and what had come back with the Colorado Civil Rights Commission, that they actually were the ones that were found to discriminate more against the faith-based community. By all means, everyone up here knows I'm either agnostic or atheist, so religion has no bearing on my decision-making, but making laws does, and I basically have to realize that when we draft ordinances, they have to encompass the entire city, even people of different faiths than my own. And so, when, if this comes forward, I would encourage any of you that wish to bring this up, that you don't basically do an impulse buy. This is something that is going to require a very substantial amount of work. This is something that is going to require a very substantial amount of work. I would discourage you from actually doing a copy and paste of the Laramie ordinance, strictly on the premise that, as the mayor stated on the radio this morning, in regards to civil penalties versus criminal penalties, just that facet alone, any of you that have read the Laramie ordinance know that it's going, it goes almost two steps through the attorney's office before it finally goes to the mayor. These types of issues, I would prefer to leave in basically law enforcement's hand. I met with somebody who had deep concerns in regards to LGBTQ rights last week. And the way I stated it was that politicians can change, even though our current mayor favors LGBTQ rights by marching in the Boston parade and other examples that she's shown through her campaign, the next mayor may not have the same type of thoughts. And so therefore, you have to think of how the city can actually end up in court over these topics. The example I give typically is if a law enforcement officer was to report to any crime, that just on the facet alone of how our law enforcement would actually reply to these, if a complaint was issued, something as simple as, I didn't refuse them service because they were LGBTQ. I came, I refused them service because they came in and caused a ruckus. And the officer reporting to the crime says, oh, that makes sense. And therefore, the officer does not write any citations. Therefore, it could, the city could find itself in potential problems stating that we did not follow the law accordingly as it was reviewed under those parameters. That's the one thing that I actually look for when I draft laws, is I make sure that both sides actually have a fair shake in court with the judge as the arbitration and then it can go up that line of, you know, up that channel to be escalated as it does in the Colorado Baker case and as far as the Washington Florist and other things that are coming forward. So I don't discourage a nondiscrimination ordinance, but I would really not want to do the flavor of the week and just whip something out just because you're hearing it on the streets or it's an election year and you think that this might detract your votes, it might get you votes. This is something that's going to take an extreme amount of work to get this actually finalized for a tangible document. I will not be here to see that done. And right now, if I was to see a nondiscrimination ordinance come forward, I would view that it hadn't been properly vetted and that we hadn't actually thought about all the repercussions it had. And me personally, I would prefer not to sit through three nights of extensive dialogue once again for something. If we're not going to learn from the Human Rights Commission in 2015, if we're not going to learn from our nondiscrimination resolution in 2016, then really, I know that this is a contentious issue. I know people are going to speak regardless of what we write, but if we're going to actually draft something of this magnitude, we need to make sure that we're actually doing it with a very intelligent manner to make sure that all of our questions, from our law enforcement protocol, to how our city attorneys are going to actually handle this, so that we actually have questions answered for the public when they speak there, so that it's not an impulse or emotional decision. As several of us up here during the resolution saw this, the resolution actually broke about, you know, 51 people for, you know, 50 people against or, you know, vice versa with the numbers. And so I do want you, if you are going to pursue this nondiscrimination ordinance, by all means, I would like any of you to give this more than a month's worth of thought, to just put this on the agenda by the end of summer, because we haven't had the proper chance to vet this solution through, especially with the Supreme Court pretty much standing aside on this issue. It looked like that's what was happening with the Washington Florist today, as well as the decision that they made several weeks ago in regards to the Leviticus cakes, as well as the other one. So I know that that's fairly somber, but that's my take on Counsel's course of what we should take. Right now, I would not support it due to lack of vetting. On a more positive note, this Saturday, let's see, June 30th at 2:00 PM at the Paramount Patio, once again, we're doing a splash pad fundraiser. This one is rock, paper, scissors and bear hunter ninja. Rock, paper, scissors, everybody kind of knows what that is. And then bear hunter ninja, I'm sure you basically do back-to-back, turn around, make a bear symbol, make a ninja symbol, make a gun hunter symbol and you can kind of figure that out. But $20 entry fee, I'm hoping to at least get 50 members of the community from all ages. We were waiting for the patio to open to do in all ages, so I hope to see somebody in their 80s go up against a four-year-old for the final. And all the pros out there that think they can beat everybody, that they have a strategy developed, get beat by a four-year-old. So that's our hope for this Saturday. I didn't intend to bring this up, but when they brought up the RVs. One thing I've turned in a couple of times and it never seems to be addressed is the hedge on Carey Avenue in Pershing. That, it's just so large that, I mean, my car has a large engine compartment and it feels like I'm almost hanging out in the intersection before I even make a right-hand turn. If anything can be approached to actually get that down to some kind of sizable range so that you can actually either see over it, see through it, or have it backed up past the sidewalk because that one definitely impedes vision. And then I want to applaud Mayor Orr for, I was with her at County Commission that Mr. Dirksen addressed last week, even though the commissioner did say what she had stated. I have been talking with the senator to get a Y, there's a Y dot detention pond that's also affected this, does involve all of state, county and city. And so by all means, I think all of us need to be at the table. And so by all means, if the county commissioners are watching this, the city is still willing to extend the olive branch to you to get this problem resolved. And so with that, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Anyone else tonight? All right. Will there be no further business to come before the Counsel? We are adjourned.